Everybody, how you doing? Can you hear me okay? All right. So, welcome to our board meeting. We will call the meeting to order. I got 7:01, Mr. Resson. Tonight's meeting. Jennifer Massey will not be present. All other board members appear to be present. And with that, if you could, please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is our student council, but I don't see anyone here from the council. They're probably preparing for a graduation this weekend, which is great. So, we'll move right to the public forum. And again, reminder that for anyone listening to the meeting, we have an email box set up to directly email your comments, should you wish to do that during the public forum. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Green Bush Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and/or operations of the district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board did not correctly respond to citizens' concerns in the public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact the individual in their future. Those persons wishing to address the board would recognize by the chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name, address, or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon pre-speech protection, it must be stressed the business forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which be considered defamatory or stigmatizing or prohibited, clear out of order. So, we will now accept any emails if they come through. No emails at this point. Is there anyone out there who'd like to address the board this time? Other than board members? That's the whole audience tonight. That I can see anyway. And if we do get any emails, we'll read those. But I think at this point, what we'll do is we'll move to the board forum and superintendent report. And I'll start with, I'll go around the proverbial table like I used to, and we'll start with Michelle. Is she there? Thank you, Michelle.
No, I'm good. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Michelle. Mr. Dunn?
All set, Mike.
Thanks, John. Good. Deanna?
I'm good. Thank you.
Go ahead. Kathleen?
I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for all of their end-of-the-year celebrations. It was a lot of fun watching them from the comfort of my living room. We were especially impressed with Colombian awards. They did a fantastic job. And I do have to say, I'm sorry that I missed the senior parade, but I had to be out of town that day. But thank you to all the staff and the faculty and the community that have worked so hard to make the end-of-the-year special for so many of the kids. Oh, you too, Michelle, because I heard that GAF was amazing.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathleen. Joanne?
I'd like to say thank you to the community for coming out to support our budget in a very unusual way this year. The amount of response that we got was amazing, and the positive vote was just wonderful to all of us and to our students. Thank you to the community for believing in us, and thank you to our administrative team, our teachers, our complete staff for putting out a responsible budget and making it work for our kids.
Great. Thank you, Joanne. And I would echo all those comments too. Karen? Karen? There you are.
Yep, I'm here. Hi there. I want to echo also what everybody has said. It was really an amazing year with everybody pulling through this trying time. I want to thank everybody for the great budget vote pass. Larry, for all your hard work, and all the staff in the business department pulling it all together. Everybody working collaboratively really was great to pull out such a great vote. And bear with me for this one. I just, I've, it's really with a heavy heart that I've decided to resign my position as a school board member due to some personal and medical issues. It really has been an amazing journey and honor and privilege for me to serve the East Green Bush Central School District in the manner which I have for over the past 13 years. I want to thank everybody that's been involved, allowing me to serve our community in this capacity. Over my tenure in the district, we've had many good times and many challenges, but we've really all worked together collaboratively to overcome with collaboration of all stakeholders in this community. We have developed some amazing programs and opportunities for all of our students while still maintaining a fiscally responsible budget. There's been so much growth over the years, even with all the state and federal guidelines and cuts that we've had to face and overcome in public education. This year in particular, everybody's displayed such professionalism as we as a district have stayed above the curve with planning and program development while dealing with COVID-19 and all of the restrictions with remote learning that this has caused. It is through collaboration that we're able to keep our students' education a priority and monitoring and maintaining their safety and well-being at the same time. I really am proud and thankful that I've been able to be a part of this amazing journey over the past 13 years. I have a genuine respect for everyone involved in public education and our system, and know how dedicated everybody in East Green Bush really is to provide the best quality education to our students. Like I said, it's really been a long journey, and it does take an entire team and village of people collaborative.
Anyone?
I cannot mute her. I think she was.
Karen, you're on mute.
Have I been on mute a long time?
Village was the last. They heard Village.
Oh, Village. All right. Sorry, sorry. I just think it takes a village. And I want to thank everybody again, from the families and students of the district, the teachers and TAs, the buildings and ground staff, bus drivers and mechanics, secretaries and nurses, custodial staff. Oh, and I'm losing my spot. Sorry.
Take your time.
Administrators, assistant superintendents, Jeff, our current superintendent, and this great Board of Education. You all have really been a privilege and an honor to be around. You're so professional, and I really enjoyed every moment that I've had with you all. There's so many of you that have helped guide me and my children throughout their years in school, which has made them successful young adults as well. The foundation that we give our children is crucial for their future, and I hope that the future of East Green Bush is that everyone is able to personally reflect and see that we are all here for our children and their futures. Education is a very challenging place to be in during these hard times. I totally respect everybody for all their hard work and dedication that we all have for our children, and hope that in the future we're able to maintain all the wonderful staff that we have, maintain and expand our programs for kids, and be the leaders in public educations for the betterment of our students while still being fiscally responsible to our citizens like we have always been. Thanks again for this opportunity tonight to take a few minutes and talk to you guys, and I will miss you all terribly, but thank you.
Thanks, Karen. I know how challenging it's been for you. We so much appreciate all the service that you've given to the district and to this board, and especially in the last couple of years, this last year, knowing what you've been going through and just your persistence, and we wish you the best of luck. I hope we can honor you at a future board meeting where we're all together for your service. And, you know, I'll stand up and give you.
Thank you. Thank you. You don't need to do that. I appreciate it.
Help so much with different tough times, difficult times, and you know we've done that. We appreciate your counsel and the history you've brought and everything that you brought to this board in helping us be a solid team. So, again, thank you so much for that. The wonderful letter and sentiment that you just read too. I'm glad you did it that way.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Any other comments from board members? We can do that right now if you'd like, or later on, but. All right. I do want to see Kara. You're here, our new assistant director of PBS. So, good to see you at the first meeting here. So, excellent. Jeff, do you have anything?
I have a couple of things. I also want to welcome Kara to the administrative team. She started earlier this week. I do want to reiterate what Mr. Buno said regarding the appreciation that we have for Karen's service on the board. To serve on the Board of Education for 13 years is a remarkable tenure as a board member. And my interactions with you, Karen, over the last four years, almost four years now, your focus has always been on the kids and the children and what was best for everyone. So, I really appreciate that community outlook that you brought to the board, the advocacy for the kids. I will miss working with you, and I want to thank you personally for the support that you've given me as the new superintendent over the last four years. It's been very much appreciated. And hopefully you will continue to connect with me and the administrative team as a citizen and continue to be involved in some way or another because you've really done a lot of good work on behalf of the students of East Green Bush, and it's very much appreciated from the administration.
Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate that, and I will. I certainly will.
There is one other item that I just want to remind everybody. We are limiting participation due to the state regulations in our commencement ceremony, which is on Saturday, starting early in the morning, around nine, and probably ending around 4:30, 4:45. We sent out a reminder today, and I'll send a copy of that reminder letter to the board tomorrow regarding the procedures that we're going to follow. We had a meeting yesterday just to coordinate to make sure that everything was in place, and it is. Also to talk about the forecast. The forecast is not ideal, but ultimately, we know upstate New York, it could change. In the event that the weather is such that we would need to postpone one of the groupings, the morning group would be notified through school messenger, email, and text around 8:00 AM. And the first ceremony starts at nine. In the event that group six through 10:00 or in the afternoon be impacted by inclement weather, we will notify that group by noon. Hopefully, there'll be enough clear skies in between the rain or to accomplish this on Saturday. But we also have Sunday reserved as a backup date. If we move it any further down, the weather forecast didn't get any better during the week, next week. And then we're into the Fourth of July. So, we're going to try to get it in. We hope that we'll be able to do that with as few raindrops and undershowers as possible. But we do have a system in place to communicate with the families about an hour in advance of their time of arrival. I thank Mr. Harkin and Mr. Adam for putting that together today and sending it out.
Well, now move on to our discussion items. First on the agenda, item A is the Athletic Code of Conduct for 2020, 2021.
This is an annual review that is conducted by our athletic director, Mr. Leonard. It outlines the expectations of students for participation in interscholastic athletics. There's a committee that represents Mr. Leonard as well as some coaches and our board. I believe Mr. Buno is on that committee, and this is Taylor. I think that's correct.
Yep.
And they reviewed the document. We made some changes a couple of years ago to make sure that the rules were aligned with the district's code of conduct for students. It includes no changes. So, there are no changes that we're asking the board to approve from the Athletic Code of Conduct on the agenda tonight and what's been in place for the previous school year. Nothing's been revised.
Any comments or questions about the Athletic Code of Conduct? Again, no changes and this proceeded as you did last year. Then it's on the agenda later on to consent. Some for Apex Program?
Yes. As we have completed the school year, apart due to remote learning, we're not able during the school year to provide an opportunity for students to participate in a computer-based credit recovery program called Apex. Typically, if a student were needing extra support to pass a course during the first semester, for example, or even during the, entering into the third quarter, we would be able to provide some individual support through Apex for the students to pass the course, recover their credits, and be eligible for course credit. We took a look through Mr. Harkin's review at a number of students that may need extra support to pass classes, particularly as we are moving into summer. And several students were impacted by the inability to get the support during the school year. So, we're recommending if the district goes into Phase Four, if the area goes into Phase Four, that we would implement a summer Apex program as we've done in the past. That program would involve between 50 and 60 students who did not receive full course credit. We have staffing interest in doing the program, and it does come at an expense, but we think it's an expense worth supporting. It's been successful in the past. And we're hoping that if we are in Phase Four, we'll be able to implement. And Mr. Harkin has put the logistics in place for all of the planning, including the social distancing and similar requirements to what are special at summer school. I don't know if Mr. Harkin is out there and wants to add anything in terms of the assignment of the kids and where the kids will work and so forth. But I think we've got planned in pretty good shape.
Yeah, that's correct. That's correct, Mr. Simons. We have four labs open for that. We'll have no more than 10 people in each lab. And a couple of the students who we identified that completed all their assignments in Quarter Four, we're going to allow them to work from home as they've shown, demonstrated they can be responsible students. So, we won't exceed the capacity in any of the computer labs.
We have five or six staff. Is that correct? Or is there more than that?
Just, we have four. Four staff members in the four labs.
Okay, very good.
Is there a minimum number? We need to run that this year?
I don't think we have a minimum number.
Okay.
No, that, we don't have a minimum. We usually fill it up, and we usually do 50 to 60 students every summer. We're hoping to do the same thing this summer.
Great. Any other questions, board members, for Mr. Harkin or Mr. Simons about the program? Karen Dunn will proceed to the next item. So, very interested to hear about the update on how the summer school extended school year is going.
I've just passed most of this to Molly and Tom Brenauk was with us, and Mark Knowles has been involved in the planning and Paul Bickel. The team under Molly's direction has done a fantastic job at pulling together our planning for extended summer year, extended school year, summer programs for our special education students. We provided some documents on board docs, but Molly and the team have been working fearlessly to put out some additional communications. And I'm going to ask Peter right now to pull up some of the documents and to share the screen. So, Molly, I'm going to ask you to start, and then if you want to invite Tom, Paul, or Mark, or anyone else who's been involved in discussion to kind of give us an update on the summer program. I'm really impressed by what you've been able to pull together.
Thank you, Jeff. So, I'll give you a brief summary of all the planning that's going on since June 5th, when Cuomo's executive order allowed us to move forward with in-person services. We have, we surveyed all 255 families who are eligible, and 175 students have opted in. So, on the screen right now is the flyer that's going home tomorrow as a welcome packet to families, and it outlines what families need to know. So, our class sizes, our largest class size is nine, which is well within the guidelines of below 10. So, we have 25 sections. So, we'll be staffing 25 teachers, 31 teaching assistants, and eight related service providers, which are OT, PT, speech, and social work. We have a training for staff tomorrow afternoon where we will be reviewing all of the CDC and Department of Health guidelines, which include the proper social distancing, cleaning, disinfecting, face covering for employees, mandatory health screening before employees arrive at work, which we will be using an app purchased through NAREC that we just had our final meeting today. So, it's been rapid planning, but we're in a really good place. Paul Bickel and Mark Adam have secured all of the appropriate signage for hallways, classrooms, bathrooms, just to remind everyone to keep six feet apart, proper hand washing. And then we have a very comprehensive transportation plan that I will turn it over to Mark, and he can share how we are keeping students socially distant and his plan for the buses.
Thanks, Molly. So, we have 18 summer school bus routes. There's 12 large buses with 11 students apiece on them for the social distancing, and six small buses with five also for social distancing. So, every bus will have an aide, either a teacher's aide or a bus aide, who will screen the students before they get on the bus for temperature. Any temperature over 100.4, the student will stay home. Drivers and aides, when they arrive at the bus garage, they will also be screened, not by temperature, but there'll be a written screening that they'll be required to fill out daily. Drivers and aides will wear proper PPE at all times, a face shield for the driver. We're not going to require a cloth mask for the driver because it's, I'm sure you have worn a cloth mask, and they fog up your glasses. They make it tougher to breathe. We do have face shields for all of the drivers. However, the aides, the bus aides, the teacher's aides, they should wear a cloth mask. We highly recommend students to wear a mask, but we cannot require them to. The students will all sit in assigned seats by grade level. The oldest students in a rear, the youngest in a front. They'll maintain their assigned seats throughout. If the student is not there, the seat will be empty. We can't, we can't put more students on the bus because there won't be any social distancing. So, when the bus arrives at the school, it will stop at three different stops. You can see that on your screen. The first one is for kindergarten to three. I'm not sure if you have any kindergartners, but, so, one to three. The first stop is for one to three. Those students get off. They're met by teachers and teacher's aides. The bus is six feet away from the curb. Social distancing is maintained throughout, and they move into school through the side entrance. Then the bus moves up, drops off, four through eight. Same scenario. They're six feet from the curb. Teachers and aides take them into the school through the front entrance, and finally, around the corner, the nine through 12. After school, the buses will line up six feet away from the curb, all the way around the loop. You can't see me really pointing. I'm pointing as I'm talking. But they'll start at the very beginning and line up 18 buses in a row, and the students will be brought out to the bus where they'll load in their seating assignment order. Our buses will be cleaned in between each run. Either a driver or another transportation employee will clean the bus with the OxyFex-G, which is a hydrogen peroxide-based cleaner that the district has already, and it's on the COVID-19 list. The drivers and the cleaners will be wearing proper PPE during cleaning as well. And then they'll be sanitized after each run as well. So, there's cleaning, sanitizing. We'll use a bleach solution initially to sanitize the buses. We have a Gen Eon as a manufacturer, the fogger mister that we'll be using eventually that uses a saline solution that's electrostatically charged to provide disinfection. We have two on order. We don't have any in stock now. The district does have one. Additional notes to the transportation are that the routing is hard and fast. In other words, no additional riders because there's just not room. Alternate locations for students while we don't. I didn't enjoy taking away service, but we can't have alternate locations and different drop-offs because it means they have to ride a different bus. So, they ride the same bus in the morning and the same bus in the afternoon. For example, if Johnny Smith wants to get on at GCC in the morning, he has to get off at GCC in the afternoon. We have four additional runs around the district runs. Identical cleaning and screening protocols will be followed, and separate transportation will be provided to students who take ill while they're at school. We'll provide a bus for that and a driver, and that student will sit well away from the driver so that we can take them home. Additional runs may be added depending on services that are required. And that's about it.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Peter, could you pull up the summer school planning memo for the board? I'm going to ask, and you could scroll down and show the picture of the classroom. I'm going to have Tom share with you guys our classroom setup and the safety measures we have in place inside the classroom.
Thanks, Molly. Yeah. This is, the theme this year is social distancing door-to-door. It's, that's all we've been thinking about since we've started the planning. You're looking at a mock-up classroom there. Maintenance and I are working on getting every classroom marked up kind of like this, where everything is kind of designed around CDC's requirements, which are students facing forward, students six feet apart. And then if a teacher needs to be in close proximity to a student, they wear a mask. So, right now, we're taping off desks and chairs so they don't move. You know, we need the teachers to be able to go in, understand where the desks and chairs are supposed to be, where they can, and then how they can't move them. A lot of them like to have them in circles. We can't do that anymore, not this year at least. So, there's going to be a lot of adjustment by the teachers. But they're well aware of what's going on, and they're, if they have any suggestions, they're going to go through me and Molly and see if we can help them out. But other than that, it's all going to be pretty much taped out for the teachers. We have Mr. Guin, we have Chromebooks. We have locations for those to be stored away separately from each other so they're not affected by the cleaning at night. And we also understand that the students will be escorted to the restroom when they need to be. And Mr. Bickel had his guys out there putting the pots down as I was there the other day. They look really good, six feet apart, waiting for the restroom. So, we've got, everything is going to be socially distant, and I think, I think everybody's on board. We're ready to go.
Thanks, Tom. Peter, if you could just pull up the Page Two and Page Three of the Welcome Packet. I just want to share two final things. This will be going home with families tomorrow. This is a daily health screening that we're going to be encouraging. Scroll up to the health screening, Peter. Thanks. The health screening, these are the three critical questions we're encouraging families to monitor at home. We, in an effort to minimize illness, a healthy school really starts at home. So, we're asking parents and guardians to monitor their children for any symptoms listed on the side, and then to ask three questions. Has my child been around anyone with the listed symptoms or diagnosis of COVID in the past 14 days? Yes or no? Has anyone in our household been sick in the past 14 days? Yes or no? Has my child adhered to our state's guidelines regarding COVID-19? Yes or no? So, if they answer yes to any of those questions, we encourage them to stay home. We've given them a monthly calendar. The program is six weeks, so they can record their temperature at home if they'd like and any symptoms. And then the last page, we know that our students have not been in our building since March. So, I was very worried about anxious, nervous students arriving at an unfamiliar building, Columbia High, greeted by unfamiliar staff with masks. So, we asked all of our staff to send a selfie without the mask on so they can see their nice, friendly, smiling teacher faces, and then a picture of them with the mask on that says, "This is what I will look like when you see me on the first day of school" so I can keep us healthy, as well as the teaching assistants, who will be very heavily involved this year escorting students from the bus to their class space, to the bathrooms, things like that. So, that's the brief version of the planning. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Anybody? Very comprehensive. Very impressive to see the level of detail Molly and Mark and Paul. Peter, I know we were involved in terms of the Peter part. So, the training, I hope it goes well tomorrow, and really, really interested to see how we kick off. And as always, with any start of any kind of program, there'll be pickups, but I'm sure we'll get through them and have a successful extended school year program.
Molly, I want to again congratulate you and the team for what a great job you did. One thing I would mention is, it's on the documents, you have been consulting, you've been consulting with Dr. Albert, the school's physician, along the way, reviewing the screenings, some of the protocols for isolating kids in the event that they get sick. And Dr. Albert has been very responsive and supportive of what we're doing. And I appreciate all the effort that's going into this, particularly as we, as we did not have a lot of time with us together, and I'm very encouraged and I'm looking forward to the first day on July sixth.
It looks like a nice model, let's see how things work here. And then, again, a lot of schools chose to do a hybrid model or a virtual model, and I commend the district for providing in-person instruction for our special education students so they can continue to learn over the summer and get the services that they need.
Molly, I was especially impressed with the pictures at the end of the teachers, with and without the mask. That was a great touch, and I think you really, like, covered all the bases on everything. Mark, Peter, everybody did a great job.
Thanks, Kathleen. I haven't slept since June fifth, so.
Any other comments, board members? Hearing none, we'll move to the next discussion item regarding facilities and grounds during COVID-19.
We had a discussion at the last board meeting about the rules that were under regarding opening up our school facilities for outside groups, such as summer camps, sports activities. It was suggested by the board, it was a good suggestion, that we sent a letter letting everyone know that we were hoping to make our facilities and grounds available, as the state determined that the capital region is in phase four and that we are ready to do so. I want to thank Paul Bickle, who put the letter together, which is posted on the agenda, and he has sent it out to all the groups that we know about in terms of the building requests that we typically receive. We are supportive of community use of the facilities, we just want to make sure that we're doing it with the authority of the state. So that letter went out on June nineteenth, and it looks that we have been in communication with them in great fashion.
You know, with phase four, there are several exceptions to things in phase four.
Yes.
Larger-type venues and events and things like that are not going to be allowed to open in phase four. Do we know what this is included in? Is it, you know, like any movie theater, malls, larger venues that hold more than X number of people?
These are generally sports activities and sports-related camps, like Girl Softball Association, baseball, Sun School Baseball, the, some of our, some of our coaches that work independently and operate sports camps are all under, if they're operating on our property, they have to, it's not, doesn't include authorizing, for example, the Dantrell Cital to use the Columbia High School outside. Outside, outside, you know, within the parameters. Now, there was another executive order that indicated if we were still in phase three on July sixth, certain sports could operate, such as tennis, field hockey, I think was another one, baseball, softball. And that was kind of separate because that generally applied to any of those types of activities that aren't on school grounds. But if we're in phase four, we can permit utilization. So that might even occur before July sixth. Are there any groups that I'm not aware of, any types of activities that I'm not aware of? Does it generally cover sports?
Yes, sports for the most part, but I did open it up to kind of be more general about anything. So if somebody wanted to have an outdoor group gathering of any kind, they would have to submit a special plan, but it's basically sports-related at this point, is where we kept it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do we have to modify our agreement at all to address any issues as we reopen and someone wants to come in? Do we have to, should we modify our agreement at all to account for that facility?
We general, our forms, you mean? I don't believe we have to modify them. They just have to submit a plan. And I think it's fairly similar to what the reopening plan is for private businesses. It's included within the, the criteria is included within the New York Forward document of the government. It's really coordinated by the Office of Economic Development.
Okay.
So anybody that wants you to feel that to submit a plan to the district, saying, this is how we're going to operate?
They have to have a plan that's developed to operate. District, so far, the groups that have requested, like the Girl Softball Association, have given us a copy of their plan. I'm not sure they're required to give us the plan, we just have to have.
But on the line, what Mike's talking about revising our form, are we going to make that requirement? So we know, they're just saying they're going to open up and you've got places filled with people, is that, I mean, I don't know what the state's guidelines are.
Our letter indicates that along with the certificates of insurance, Green Bush provides the district with a written plan as to how they plan to follow the New York State COVID-19 protocols that include limitations on group sizes, social distancing, covering phases per complete date, updated list of the protocols. They're directed to go to the website, coronavirus.hel. They submit the plan, I stand corrected, they submit the plan with the forms. Yeah, so the forms, until we get the plan, we don't do the. All had that base covered.
Any other questions on the facilities, board members? All right, our final discussion item regarding GCC, we plucked up a little bit.
Last meeting, we discussed Green Bush Childcare's request to open up their summer program, childcare program, which they have operated in the past at Janay Elementary School. We advised GCC that we couldn't open building up until phase four, and we discussed developing agreement that was more comprehensive and related to COVID-19 concerns. GCC and the district worked very cooperatively, put together this agreement that we bring before the board this evening. It includes an appendix which outlines the New York State guidelines for operations of childcare programs related to the health procedures that need to be in place. The agreement was reviewed and developed by our attorney, Jeff Lewis, from the FARA firm, and reviewed by GCC's board. We were all in agreement with the terms of the agreement. I was informed today that in addition to all the provisions within the agreement, GCC will provide a staff member who is a licensor. So there was an additional add that was not something that the district required, it was something that they offered to do, and have made the decision to include that staff member. This agreement, if approved by the board, indicates that they would have permission to begin enrolling kids in the program predicated on the phase four. In fact, that we're not in phase four, we won't be able to let them use the building. So Mr. Gregnon's been involved in the conversations with GCC, Paul Bickle has been involved as far as furniture arrangements, the number of classrooms that are needed, the availability of individual desks, use of the gym, any procedures for the classrooms, as well as the playground, and we think we're in pretty good shape.
Any further questions? All right, excellent. So we'll see those, couple of items on the agenda later on the consent side. And we'll now move to committee reports. We'll start with Mr. Simons on the school reopening.
Well, the district formed a reopening task force, which is represented by seventy-one or so numbers of the staff, who were all eager to serve, administrative, to teachers, to nurses, teaching assistants, to clerical staff, custodial staff, and we've had two meetings, and they've been very well attended. We determined at our first meeting that we would organize subcommittees. Between the first meeting and the second meeting, we provided assignment for each of the staff members, either based on their interest in serving on a particular subcommittee or where we needed to make sure that we had representation from various roles within the district. The subcommittees are organized around the same topics and areas that the state task force is looking at. Those subcommittees, trying to find it right now, are, have already had a couple of meetings in between our last meeting. There's a Health and Safety Committee, there's a Transportation Facilities and Nutrition Committee, there's a Teaching and Learning Committee, Digital Equity and Access, Budget and Fiscal, Social Emotional Needs, Special Education, Bilingual Education, and Staffing and Human Resources. A little bit later on in the agenda, Jim McQ, who chairs the Teaching and Learning Committee, as well as the, the Bilingual Education Committee will give a report. Mr. Edson is chairing the Business Finance, Budget and Fiscal Committee, along with Linda Wager, who will be our Director of Business and Finance. They have had a meeting. Chris Cannon is chairing the Staffing and Human Resources, and she will give a report on that. So we're following basically the same organizational structure that the state is following. We have asked each subcommittee to review some of the documents that have been provided, Questar Bosie's, to make some kind of a checklist of the topics and the areas that that bigger subcommittee needs to make recommendations on. Additionally, Questar, my request has provided some sample reopening plans from other states we'll take a look at at our next meeting. So we think that our process is pretty well moving forward. We are looking at three scenarios, as is the state. If we are to reopen with students and staff fully coming back, what would the procedures be to ensure health and safety? And then we are in compliance with the guidelines. Second scenario would be some type of a combination or hybrid, where students are engaged in remote learning for part of the day and attending physically school during another part of the day. Or if we are in a period of time where remote learning is maintained, what can we learn from what we've experienced, sort of a crisis response mode since March thirteenth, that will add more structure and improve what we can do should we have to continue to engage our students and our teachers and our families in remote learning? So each subcommittee is looking at those three models. I was very encouraged and excited about participating in the state's process for reopening. I participated in that meeting on Monday. There were more than three hundred and fifty people on the meeting, which was unprecedented in and of itself. The meeting was well organized through Zoom. We had started the meeting with three hundred and fifty people, and we received a presentation from a physician at SUNY Downstate Medical Center, which I believe is in Brooklyn, on COVID-19. It was a nice summary of what COVID-19 is, what factors are involved, symptoms are, and what some of the considerations are in prevention. Then we had a very insightful presentation from an individual who talked about social emotional needs of kids, provided a framework for districts to consider in transitioning kids back to school, and on their own individual mental health and social emotional needs, but also community needs, and how we can, as a school district, make sure that we are thinking about all the aspects of transition for kids who have been in this isolated period of, been isolated for a significant period of time. Then we broke into subgroups, which was a pretty neat trick for the State Education Department to pull up, and they pulled it off very well. Automatically assigned people by code to a subcommittee. So we were moved from a group of three hundred and fifty to a group of about twenty-three. I was assigned to the Subcommittee on Transportation, Facilities, and Nutrition Services, along with twenty-two other individuals. We were asked to answer and respond to three questions that were provided by the state. The first question was related to, what do you think the greatest challenge is that schools and school districts will face under each of the three instructional models, in-person, remote, or a combination of the two? That was an opportunity to identify what some of the constraints would be, what some of the concerns and challenges would be. Second question was, can you provide some concrete examples of creative solutions to challenging problems that would work within your school or school district in each of the three scenarios? And the third question, which was a good one, can you tell us how the Regents and the Department of Ed can help eliminate any institutional, budgetary, or regulatory obstacles that stand in the way of your success? And looking at the three focus areas, nutrition, transportation, and facilities, the most challenging of those three, in my view, is the transportation piece. How do you socially distance kids on a bus? And what would be the overall impact on transportation if the district was required to be in some kind of a hybrid model? Of all of the models, my own view is that the hybrid model is the most complicated, most difficult to implement. You would have a situation where our families would be impacted. For example, if elementary is operating on a different day than high school, or groups of kids are coming in for half the day and home for half the day, that may present a challenge for working families that have to go to work. I think that the continued remote learning, I think families are starting to feel that the social emotional impact of that is something, is a factor that is causing many more parents to hope that we can return to school in person. And the in-person model is fraught with concerns about how do we protect the kids and the staff when they come back? So it was a really interesting conversation, it was a rich conversation. We didn't come up with any solutions that we know for sure would be adopted by SEB or the Board of Regents, but we got a chance to contribute our ideas, and that information is being compiled by an independent group called West Ed, which is a U.S. Department of Education-funded, non-for-profit organization that does research on schools. And then that information will be presented to the Board of Regents on July thirteenth. One of the concerns that we have is to make sure that whatever guidance is provided, that it be provided sooner than later, because there will be a lot of decisions that need to be made by September, if in fact we are opening in September. The other tension, so to speak, within the dialogue was, there are a number of districts that like flexibility regarding the guidelines from the state, but we also want specificity. So it's kind of hard, I would think, from the State Education Department's standpoint, to provide enough discretion for districts to be able to develop plans that work for their particular communities, but also have enough specificity in the guidelines so that we're all doing something that's fairly consistent and safe and healthy for our educational community. That's where the tension really comes. It was a very good, very good and productive session, I was glad to be part of it. Mr. Alvey was also part of it. He was assigned to a group that had the same focus areas as I did, but he was, there were two groups, so he wasn't in the same group as I am, so we haven't, we haven't had a chance to collaborate yet, I thought we would be doing that. Very thoughtful process, it worked really well.
Any questions for Mr. Simons? Now move to Mr. McQ.
Good evening. I've had the opportunity to participate in a three-week symposium through Stony Brook University School of Professional Development. It's been a worthwhile experience. One of the things right off the start that just was interesting and was a good thing to consider is, during the three-week symposium, in order to get credit for participating, I need to ask at least one question in the chatroom, and I need to respond in a meaningful way to two other participants' questions. So even that gets you thinking about increasing the accountability for students in remote learning. learning. So the first, the first symposium was really talking a lot about facility readiness, and it just gives you great things to think about, you know, about creating checklists and being very specific and intentional when you talk about, you know, what needs to be done in order to make sure our facilities are safe. So identifying the areas that need to be cleaned, the frequency that those areas should be cleaned, and maybe the logistics are a little different from classrooms to hallways to locker rooms, or gymnasiums, or fitness areas, or science labs, those areas where there's a little bit more contact, or where it's a little bit more challenging to actually individualize the sharing of equipment, so bathrooms, things like that. They discussed protocols for large events, so if we were to return and we were able to have some of those large events, like sports, or concerts, or meetings, what are the protocols for setting up and cleaning? You know, and they include, you know, specifying exactly what products should be used, and throughout the symposium so far, they talked about how important it is to really be clear with our, all stakeholders in communicating and making sure that our community, our school community knows what we're, what we're working on. They talked about the need to revise emergency plans, so when you think about a typical fire drill, or an emergency evacuation, that our emergency plans may, may need to change a little bit and be adjusted due to COVID-19. They talked about COVID policies and the importance of really establishing some clear, documented, and policies that our, our public is aware of. For example, how we handle a confirmed case of COVID-19, how we handle a student or an employee that may be symptomatic of COVID-19, or if we're aware that somebody was exposed to COVID-19, exactly how do we handle those situations? So they did define direct contact versus indirect contact, which I found that interesting, the way they really define direct contact is exposed for 15 minutes or longer within the six feet social distancing to a person that has a COVID, a confirmed case of COVID-19. But they talked a lot about responsibility to inform, and really being specific in your plan of who, who does that communication, who informs, and what exactly is communicated. They talked about a lot of different considerations, you know, do we require a note from a physician? They talked about the importance of establishing a chain of command. We've talked about cafeteria and the challenges that are involved in providing breakfast and lunch to our students. You know, for example, in a lot of our cafeterias, where we've been accustomed to some of the items being self-service, and of course, they discourage that. So, you know, what's your plan? How do the students get through that line? How do they get fed, and how do they get their meals, and even the design of, of the cafeteria? A big, a big topic that they talked about the first week in the symposium was access control, how students, faculty, and staff and visitors will enter and exit our buildings. We become a single point of entry, you know, so do we establish more than one entry and exit for our building so that all of our students aren't funneling into a single location? They talked about the possibility of staggering bus runs, and they talked about even how we handle internal traffic, and, you know, in the hallway, internal traffic, and that could really be driven by the population, the number of students is an important factor, but they talked about such things as staggering bells, bell schedules even during the school day, and trying to plan to limit travel as much as possible, and the importance that of, of having the appropriate signage clearly visible both inside and outside of our building. So even making sure that we're, we have that six-foot separation marker in our entrance and exit areas, directly inside and outside of the building. They talked about roles and responsibilities, and, you know, we cover topics such as classroom setup, classroom supplies, especially in our younger grades, we're so used to sharing of materials, you know, you'll have a big band of markers, or crayons, or glue sticks on a table, and everybody shares at that table, and really having to change that practice. One of the things that they really talk about, and you can see why it's so important, is, you know, for all the personal protection equipment, that really you need a PPE manager, and really, you know, who's responsible? Who's responsible for ordering, for distribution, for keeping an inventory, for enforcement, and for communication? Some other things that were interesting was, they talked about a lot of discussion about social distancing, you know, a lot of people are saying, you know, we're really not comfortable with the term of social distancing, that our students need that social aspect of school more than ever now, so they started to phrase it as physical distancing, you know, and they talked about social emotional wellness, and, you know, our, our students really need that opportunity to, to engage socially. So they talked about ways that you could promote that, but also the need to educate, especially our youngest learners, when they come in, do they really understand what that physical distancing is, and, you know, the proper etiquette? So we did talk a little bit about establishing isolation rooms, a lot of school districts are considering that, you know, what do you do when a student is symptomatic and comes to school, and the school nurse is unable to get in contact with the parent or guardian and that student, you know, that you think should go home at 9:00 a.m., they're still in your building at 1:00 p.m.? So they talked a little bit about if, if you have that ability to, to establish that isolation room, you know, that, that, that has a purpose. They talked about trying to explore teachers staying in their classrooms, and, and meaning that there aren't multiple faculty members sharing the same instructional space, so trying to schedule in a way that you're minimizing that travel and that sharing of classroom space. They talked a lot about the, the ability to try to redesign a building, so you take a high school, a lot of districts are considering trying to put the four core content area teachers in the same wing, and breaking up the old, that's the math wing, or that's the English wing, and making a schedule so those students stayed in that, in that smaller isolated area within a building. Some people shared some of their plans, there was a school district that talked about that they're going to utilize older buildings in the district. If, if they can't fully return K through 12, that K6 and students with an IEP that are in a self-contained classroom will come back for in-person instruction, their older learners will stay remote. They talked about taking support staff, like teaching assistants, and pairing them with the classroom teacher. For example, you might have a class of 24 in a grade four, 12 of those students would be with the classroom teacher in the AM, in one room, a room right next to that classroom, the teaching assistant or a support staff member would have the other 12 students, and they would flip in the afternoon. And that was a lot to do with, you know, they talk about six-foot social distancing, physical distancing, and, and that's really difficult, you know, in, in our classrooms to really spread students out that much. During the second symposium, they talked about some schools and districts are requesting the flexibility to adjust their school calendar, and we see that locally in, in our new Siena College, University of Albany are doing that, some of those colleges going back early, they're ending the first semester before that Thanksgiving break, and trying to increase the amount of time that students are home, especially during that typical flu season. So that was another topic that was talked, spoken about. But they talked about the social distancing requirements, and I touched upon that a little bit, that really it's unrealistic, so, you know, all the districts are really looking for more guidance. They talked about the fact that there's a lot of technology platforms, and educational salespeople are out there and are taking advantage of that situation, and they're trying to sell a lot of new instructional platforms. But they also talked about the unplanned costs that are associated with COVID-19, and, you know, we're getting the news that we're going to have a reduction in our funding, and then all the unanticipated costs that are associated with the pandemic. They also talked about, which I thought was really important, is that the tremendous amount of effort that has been made over the last two or three years to improve our students' soft skills, the ability to work together, the ability to collaborate, and we've gotten rid of the old single desk, and we've put in this flexible furniture where students are sitting in groups and at tables, and a lot of districts are struggling because they don't even have that available furniture to really ensure that, that six-foot social distancing is enforced. There was a discussion, rethinking things like science labs, you know, where they're sharing of microscopes, and, and having to rethink those labs, and, and how we're going to conduct those labs. So, you know, they talked about the importance that, you know, our faculty, our professional faculty, needs that professional time to rethink their methodologies, and think about how they're going to, to teach the content. Some districts are exploring reshuffling their content, some of the content in an annual 10-month school year lends itself a little bit more favorably to remote learning, so, you know, making sure that they're adjusting their pacing calendar so that just in case if we went back to school, and for some reason we had to go back to remote for a period of time during the flu season, that we had made those adjustments in, in, in advance, that the content that was a little bit easier to teach through remote instruction would be at that same time. So a lot of discussion, like Mr. Simons talked about, reprioritizing the things that we really need to address in social emotional needs being number one. And then, you know, there was a, a general discussion, there's over 100 school districts participating, about the need to increase the accountability for all stakeholders, so increasing accountability for the students we serve, increasing the accountability for all employees, and there was a lot of discussion about creating instructional blocks, especially for our 6 through 12. For example, maybe at 7:50 to 8:30 a.m., all English teachers would be live, and then following that, there'd be a period where all math teachers were live. It's a little bit problematic for some of our support staff members, and we'll get to that in one of our, our subgroups. But the general consensus was that, you know, students were overwhelmed during this period of remote learning, and the general consensus was that the work and the delivery of work seemed more like homework rather than instruction. And when you ask our learners, you know, what do they like the least about school, typically it'll be homework. So, you know, just the need to rethink our, our delivery practices. Our, our teaching and learning subcommittee from Mr. Simons reopening task force, met on June 16th, and we talked about the same thing, we reviewed the Questar document, we talked about, you know, sharing of school supplies, classroom setups, we talked a lot about typical large groupings, like chorus, physical education, band, you know, where grade five in our elementary schools, they all get together once a week for band or for chorus, and the need to have to rethink whether or not that was, you know, able to continue, especially at the beginning of the year. Our music department was a little concerned because there are some instruments that are shared, you know, and really having to rethink that. Some other things we're, we discussed, you know, that committee talked about our middle school students, which is a unique age group, and there was, seemed to be an over reluctance of really being on camera during any Google Meet or live instruction, a lot of the students didn't want to be on live. We talked a lot about the way we've always purchased textbooks, and we introduce and, and, you know, recommend new textbooks, and really stopping that practice unless there's a digital component to those textbook series, so. What else? The need to really explore expanding the one-to-one Chromebook initiative so that we have our K2 population covered. However, we had a lot of teachers from those primary grades that shared that, you know, the need for those hard packets was still there, and that it was really difficult because a five-year-old or a six-year-old is not going to log on for a live instruction at nine o'clock in, in the morning unless there's somebody there to help support that, you know, unless mom, dad, or there's another adult that can help that child log on and stay on for that live instruction. So our primary teachers were typically, you know, starting their, their day anywhere from eight in the morning before mom or dad went to work till eight o'clock at night when they came home from work, so there was that need, so that, that was a unique challenge. Our subcommittee for our bilingual education, we met on June 19th, and we talked about making sure that our parent communications and everything that's going out regarding COVID-19, it's at least translated in Spanish, Chinese, and Urdu. We have a large population of parents that need that. And the social emotional needs, the feeling was that it's even a little bit more severe for our English language learners, there's that lack of connectedness, and there's the need to expand our outreach, that we really need to maximize our, our face-to-face interaction with that population of students, and that those families are a little bit more reluctant to ask for help. And, you know, the challenges associated, again, with making sure they understand what physical distancing, social distancing really means, and what the expectations are. They did, our, our, all of our English language learner teachers were part of that subcommittee, and they talked about the challenges with online learning and remote learning, that it was really difficult to connect with some of our family, families earlier in the day, and a simple thing was that the families were connecting with family members back in their home country, and the difference in time schedules, that they were up quite late, and it, it was tough to make those connections. We talked about strategies that we currently have in place, we use some outside services, Lingalix, LexiKeet, and all language translators that help us translate documents. We talked about refining our orientation program regardless of, of what our strategy is to open up the school year, but we really need to make sure that we clearly explain what our role is as, as a school district, and that our families are aware of the available resources both inside our school and in our community. And we talked about, you know, the challenges associated with the social distancing with our ENL population, you know, some of our teaching spaces for our, our ENL teachers are very small and restrictive, so we're, we're, we're talking about that, and we're exploring whether or not some of those spaces can change, at least for the beginning of the year. And we, the last thing that I'll mention is that we really talked about the challenges of wearing those masks with groups like our ENL population that rely so much on social cues and the formation of our words, that, you know, that, that's a unique challenge. So we talked about the use of facial shields rather than the masks, and the other part was that it's difficult for our ENL service providers to provide their services in any kind of fully remote learning situation, to support all of those blocks, and also get their required minutes in as well. So a lot of great discussion, and we'll be meeting again after our whole committee meets. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Any questions? Very comprehensive. Sounds like you've been a little busy. And I hope a lot of those ideas do make it into the, I mean, a symposium sounds like it was just like a reopening task force, and a very condensed version, in that a lot of what you're learning and hearing about will eventually be incorporated into a statewide plan with some local, fingers crossed. A lot there, and a lot, very, you know, expensive, obviously, a lot of financial issues to consider, people issues to consider, so. Can we?
Um, Jim, I've got a question. In the symposium, have they had any discussion on if they think any of these things are going to be incorporated consistently into education now? I mean, you, little things, you were talking about the crayons always being separate, like, do we have to rethink, kind of rethink how we do some stuff? I know I'm on the board for a camp, and they're saying that some of the things we've done in the past will never come back. Do you see any of that happening here?
So that's a great question, and, you, you know, our Questar III, we had a CIA meeting this afternoon, and Terry Bordell connected us with Tom Murray, who's going to work with our component districts, and he talked about, this is really an opportunity to really change the delivery of, of education, the product of education, so. So, you know, he's very optimistic that these, you know, we're finding that there are students that learn better remotely and and that, you know, some things, it's not, he wants, he encourages to approach it not necessarily just for a period of time, but for moving forward permanently, that that could change. So, you know, I think some of the things are temporary, like, you know, community resources and things like that. We have a unique community that's already reached out to us to try to help support our schools. We have a local business, local company that is trying to support both Red Mill and Donald P. Sullivan, our two Title I schools. You know, the one thing I will add is, there's over 100 districts participating in the symposium, and we have a lot of work to do, but we're in pretty good shape, and it's it's the collaborative effort of our entire administrative team and our teachers. We're we're in pretty good shape compared to some other districts. We have a lot of work to do, but, you know, the things that come up, we've been on them, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thanks, Jim. We'll now move to Marissa.
The Human Resources and Staffing Subcommittee met on Thursday, June 18th. We first reviewed the Questar resource together and then broke out our discussion into separate categories. So, for social distancing protocols, really identifying what those will be in September, will our students need to be spaced six feet apart in classrooms? Is it a concern because not all classrooms would be large enough for that? Potentially using more than one point of entry for our students to gain access into the building? What does that look like in terms of staffing? Will we have to stagger staff to help monitor those areas? Looking at our high school and middle school bell schedule, how are students are going to be moving from point A to point B with the traffic flow? Will that need to be reworked? Identifying the number of people that can be in common rooms together. So, looking at the lunchroom for staff, the copy room, the lobby, making sure we have proper signage and posters on those areas so all of our staff know what is the occupancy for a safe and healthy environment. In terms of employee management, making sure we're monitoring daily attendance and making sure we have contact tracing. So, for our staff that not only go into one building but have multiple building assignments, making sure that's accounted for. Looking at virtual meetings when practical instead of in-person, depending on the size of the meeting. And providing training for all staff on all new policies in terms of social distancing, wearing of appropriate PPE, addressing any medical concerns that they may have that would potentially prohibit them from coming back into the workforce if COVID-19 is still present in the fall. Looking at potentially a rotating of staff schedules in the event of a hybrid model, if that's used. Potential survey for staff about what their concerns would be in terms of medical reasons and how do we best support that. Another item we discussed was a plan for delivery of education and health services in case of reduced staff due to the pandemic. So, if we have two nurses out, do we have the substitute nursing staff available that would be able to go into our buildings and fulfill those roles? So, there may be a potential need to recruit more substitutes in those critical areas over the summer to prepare ourselves for what could be in the fall. In terms of PPE, we have been very diligent about ordering masks and face shields, gloves, goggles for staff who need them, ensuring all of our employees have access to those, and then making sure they know how to safely wear the PPE and how to wash the PPE. Reviewing of our district policies and procedures to make sure we're in compliance with any local and state policy. We need to make sure that the employees that do need to use their leave time have the knowledge on how to use that time. So, ensuring all of our information on COVID-19 federal leave is posted in all of our buildings. They have released posters at this point, so making sure we're in compliance with that. Currently, we have a service, capital EAP, informing our staff of the available mental health resources that they have to them, workshops on how to cope with stress, and making sure we have an adequate visitor policy. So, who needs to gain entry into the building and who could drop off something right in that vestibule area so they don't need to go through the building? And putting protocols in place for our parent-teacher conferences, open houses, freshman orientation, really potentially redesigning what that may look like. Or, instead of it being all done online, maybe we have smaller groups that come in and we stagger that. Some of the general concerns from my Subcommittee that have already been mentioned were school buses. How do we social distance on a school bus if that protocol is in place? And employee illness, you know, really, are there enough substitutes to cover all of the absences that we may see without jeopardizing our educational and health services? And then, the last concern that my group had was the temperature tracks. So, if those are mandatory, you know, what does that time commitment look like? And how are we going to be able to provide a temperature check for every single student that's coming through our buildings? So, that was my Subcommittee group. Does anyone have any questions on that? Okay, I do have two other items I wanted to discuss. One is our staffing. As of today, all of our instructional and non-instructional positions have been posted. We did start our internal screenings this week. So, in our teachers' agreement, teachers do have the rights to transfer into the vacancies. So, that process started. We also have all of our postings listed on our district website. Mr. Adam put that up this morning. And then, lastly, similar to athletic code of conduct, the code of conduct for our school district was reviewed by the committee. The committee has decided at this point that a number of changes were made last year to the code, and we would like to roll over the code of conduct to the following school year, so 2020, 2021. So, we're not looking for the board to make any changes to that. It is on the consent agenda. It's the exact same code that we use this year. And essentially, the code is to ensure that we are providing a safe and an orderly school environment where students and district personnel can deliver the quality educational services without any disruption or interference, and making sure we have responsible behavior that is essential to achieving our goals.
Any questions for Marissa on those two other items? Thank you, Marissa.
Thank you.
Marissa? Our Subcommittee, Peter always does that, asks me to speak up. But our Subcommittee met today, and I'm wondering, Linda Wager is out there, and she's chairing our Subcommittee. She'd like to make the report. Linda?
Thank you. Yes, our Subcommittee, Budget and Fiscal Subcommittee, met this morning at 10 o'clock. So, I haven't prepared the report yet, but I will review a little bit of our discussion. We reviewed the Questar guide, which was provided to us. We talked about the importance of tracking the unique costs that are associated with COVID-19, which I have been doing since the beginning. I've been tracking expenses, including PPE and supplies, as well as daycare and some of the salaries that went along with that. And we also talked about the possibility of possibly being reimbursed by FEMA for eligible expenses. It's a little questionable as to what those eligible expenses are, but the reimbursement rate is at 75%, so I'll be looking into that further. I also reviewed with the committee, I found from the Controller's Office, a report called "Resources to Manage School District Budgeting During the COVID-19 Crisis." And this was a lot more comprehensive, and it made me feel good because a lot of what was in this document, either we are currently doing, have done, or we do on a regular basis. It really talked about the importance of monitoring our fund balance, reviewing our reserves, and it even suggested looking at our debt and could we possibly refinance or pay off some of that debt. So, in December, you will remember that we refinanced some debt then, which which provided a savings to us. We also talked about the possibility of looking at how do we spend our federal money? And possibly, we might be able to use some of our federal grant money to provide COVID-19 professional development or additional supplies as needed. But overall, we realized that there is a lot of unknown right now, and we are looking at the importance of monitoring those fund balance, the reserves, and most importantly, cash flow, because we may face a revenue shortage during the year if we have a state aid cut. So, at this point, we're going to wait until we get together again on the 29th as a task force and hear what the other committees have to say. And most importantly, it's going to be important that we all realize that there is a cost to every one of these Subcommittees, and there's going to be a need to possibly have to prioritize. So, that is basically a summary of what we did today. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Linda.
You're welcome.
So, that concludes our committee reports? Yes, very good. Well, now, just a comment, Mr. Mercy had a step away from the meeting. She was feeling ill, so she is not present any longer at the meeting. Just wanted to make her aware. She's all over. Moving to the approval of minutes. Any comments, questions, revisions on the minutes for June 10th? Hearing none, and Michelle was absent, she's not here now, so the motion approved those minutes. Kathleen, second. Joanne, all those in favor? Approved. Now, I'll go to the regular business, the voting report. Actually, I hear a lot of that. I'm delivering that. That'll be Mr. Retsch.
Great show, West Side, nice dream. At the start of the process, Superintendent Simons had a challenge for us. One of the challenges was to have the highest turnout possible. Remember what the second one was? Highest pass rate. Yes, and yes, so for the highest turnout, we received the blue ribbon. We had 7,300 envelopes that were returned by the June 16 deadline, and that was definitely a record. We found that 7,173 were available and were counted. With regard to the highest pass rate, we did not get the blue ribbon, but we got the red ribbon because it was the place ribbon, because it was the highest budget percentage in five years. So, we considered that to be a big victory. We were quite excited about the results, which were 5,349 yes and 1,807 no. That was well over a 3,500 vote margin. The same with the school buses, also passed by a very good margin. And three candidates were elected to the board, Mr. Bruno, Ms. Curtin, and Mr. Van. There were limited write-ins as expected. We always prepare our voting report for you, and it is attached to your agenda where we keep tracking the votes for a 40-year period so that we can be assured that where our trends are going. And again, this is the highest turnout that we could find since 1994. We did, we also tracked them by voting site, even though we might have had the opportunity to opt out of tracking votes this year by site. We decided to do it. So, you'll notice that each envelope that voters received on the returned envelope, there was a one, two, three, or four designating the polling site, and we sorted them and have reported our results that way. And the budget passed not only district-wide, but also in each polling site by good margins. And we had a lot of challenges in the voting process because initially, we weren't familiar with the process to account for paper ballots. And so, we received a lot of good suggestions from the New York State School Boards Association, our school attorney. We had a lot of support, Mr. Simons giving us some guidance during the process. We got a lot of help from central office staff to really put together those envelopes that they came in along with the ballots and get them out within a day and a half. And that was quite an accomplishment. And then, we had kind of a small team of about 10 or so people, because we wanted to keep it small due to COVID-19 concerns for the vote count. And as we suggested at last meeting, we said it could go into the next day. It was our hope that it wouldn't, but we found that the most difficult part of the process was opening all those envelopes and taking out the ballots. Our counting procedure, we felt, was very efficient, but boy, opening all those envelopes was a process. And I wanted to thank our voting chairperson, who was Mark Crispelak, our district clerk, G. P. Pangburn, who fielded a lot of calls about the process, our facilities of maintenance. They put out a drop box in front of Central Office. We didn't track how many we received, but I'm estimating about 400 ballots dropped off. And we were really pleased at the end because we got some good press during the process. And I had just come up with that idea to do hourly updates. I thought it would be good information. I didn't, I thought people might be a little bit bored watching us on TV or on the livestream with the process, but more people tuned in than I realized and actually texted me or emailed me and said, I saw you the other night on the livestream. I'm like, wow! And and we continued on the next day at nine o'clock. It was done by about 11:30. We also reported at noon time, we reported the final results. And as usual, we prepared a brief voting report for the board. There are so many people to thank, but really, those election workers, it was a bit of a tedious process, and they really did a great job. Probably would have rather gone to the senior drive-in event, probably was a lot more fun, but we persevered and we're very grateful that our budget passed by a good margin. Thank the community for great support, and hopefully, we won't have to do all paper ballot next year, although we do believe that the governor will possibly look at the turnouts in school elections this year, which were set to be three to five times normal turnouts, and think about possibly allowing some sort of write-in, excuse me, paper ballot on or absentee ballot, rather than just the current reasons in law. So, we really think that there's probably more school election reform down the line. That's that's all I had. And I'd like to ask Mr. Simons if he has anything to add.
Just wanted to say that Larry and his entire team did an extraordinary job. From the time we learned about the requirement to the last vote being counted, it was a fantastic job. Your organization was so impressive. Did a super, super job. I had a lot of collaboration with other districts, the superintendents vote, Questar, also among all area. And I can tell you that our process was fraught with a lot fewer problems than other districts experienced because of your organization and dedication to the district.
Well, thank you. We really do appreciate the support that you gave us, which a lot of that was kind of watching and kind of...
Out of the way.
And not, it's a lot of comments, but being there, we need to ask lots of you. And, you know, as always, we appreciate you, you know, meeting and conversing and supporting and motivating the election workers each year. Opening meeting, we had it the week before because we thought the vote might be the next day, but we were ready and we felt we did a good job of accounting for the ballots and envelopes, and of course, we're extremely excited and pleased with the result. So yes, thank you.
Organizing.
To be determined.
I just want to say thank you, Larry, the team, and our compliments to the team. And congratulations to my colleagues Kathleen and Mark for the election. I can't believe it was a tie out of all those votes, but fantastic results. So appreciative of the community, the support that we got for this budget to help our students and staff and families to deliver high-quality education in a difficult time. You know, we recognize everything that people are going through, the difficult circumstances that everyone is in. And this community is so strong in supporting its educational needs and its students and families. I'm just a very, very proud part of this community and the ongoing efforts everyone made to make a successful budget. Again, kudos to everyone for that. So much appreciated. Any other comments for Larry?
Larry, I have to say that I got great feedback out in the community from people that I didn't even know. I went to do early voting, and all of the people who were working the polls were from East Green Bush and were saying how much they loved doing it by mail. And they're kind of hoping we can do this again. I did mention that it was kind of expensive. So I just, I got more people commenting on the vote than I think I ever have. And so definitely, I think when we, when the governor looks at this, we can definitely give him some good feedback on, we got a lot of talk and a lot of participation that we haven't before.
I think part of it is that we've spent so much time to look at transparency in this district and informing the community about what's happening. And that really, really is helpful, I think, in this kind of process. We believe in that. We believe in open information and sharing. The test is the website and the financial information, the budget information, and then just district information, so the community can get involved, ask questions, and being very informed about what's happening in our district. I see Jennifer has joined us. I guess her event ended, so good to see you. Thank you for coming. Any other questions or comments for members? All right. Moving on the agenda, we have our approval of programs for residents, children with disabilities. Any comments or questions on that?
Do I have to accept that for more than one?
Or is it later on in consent?
I have, I believe it's on. No, it's not.
I have to accept this, so I need a motion to go back to item A to accept the report. Need a motion to accept the report? Mark, second. Karen, all those in favor? Report is accepted. And then the approval of programs for residents, children with disabilities. Comments, questions? Seeing none, need a motion to approve that? Jennifer, second. John, all those in favor? Approved. Reports and presentations of the superintendent? Nothing further, nothing further. Table motions, I have none at this time. All business, none. Unless the board members have anything? So now move to the consent agenda. Very large amount of items here. Are there any questions regarding any of those items, A through R?
Mike?
Done, yes.
Could we pull item B for a separate vote?
Item B, separate vote?
Yes, sir.
And B and C? Okay. Anything else? Questions or anything has been changed or removed? Okay, so we will go with items A through S, accept items B and C. Need a motion to approve those items? Kathleen, I need a second. Karen, all those in favor? All right, so we'll move to item B. I need a motion to approve item B. Mark, second. Deanna, all those in favor? All those abstaining? Mr. Dunn, approved. Item C, need a motion to approve item C? Kathleen, second. Joanne, all those in favor? All those abstaining? Mr. Man, abstaining? That's approved. Got those counts?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. New business? Board members, any new business at all? Seeing none, I do have one item. I want to just let the board know. A lot of schools, as the reopening happens and the phase four happens, we talked to Superintendent whether we wanted to start doing a more in-person model that has physical distancing and a larger space or accommodation. But I just want to throw that out to the board to start considering that as we get into July, the summer months, and we reopen. We have some larger spaces they can utilize if people are comfortable. So give you some feedback. Shoot an email, but could use a janay, a period perhaps, and then be spaced out. A lot of room there. We have some buildings that are large enough, I think. So as people are comfortable coming back, I think it's a good tone, our staff are coming back. We have in-person summer school. I think it's, it was a word to think about whether in-person will work for us, or at least more people in-person to hear. And if we have to come remote in with a few folks, we can do that as well. Okay, so just keep that in mind and think about that. Now moving to the second public forum. Any comments from the public?
We do have a comment entitled "Thank You, Larry", and it is from Christine Vachenski, who is a elementary teacher at Red Mill, who is extending her appreciation for Mr. Edson. "Thank you, Mr. Edson, for all your years of service to our district. We will miss your smiley face. Certainly, Christine Vachenski, Red Mill Mentors." Thank you very much. Yours is very nice.
Thank you, Mr. Vachenski. Very wise. Any others? I just, you're fresh. Nope, just one. Okay, very good. Any comments from the administration or anyone who's present? No? Move to the board forum. I guess we're, you're here, so we can start with you.
I just want to say goodbye to Karen and to thank her for everything that she's done. She is our longest-serving board member, and we have all learned from her over the years. And thank you very much for everything that she's done for us and for everything she's helped us with.
Thanks, Kathleen.
Thank you, Kathleen.
I'll say, Joanne?
I also would like to say goodbye and good luck to all the retirees, Mr. Edson, and a multitude of other staff that's leaving on a very strange year. We thank you for everything you've done for us and wish you luck in your retirement. Also, to Karen, my right-hand side for the past 12 years, the power of positivity that you've sent, put on this board has been remarkable. You're always humble, quiet, and always looking for the best in everyone. And we will miss you, and we thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you, Joanne.
Mr. Dunn, did you have something to say?
Yes, I do. I've got a few items. First and foremost, Larry, thank you for your service. When I first met you before I was on the board, it was that Bible study, and I really appreciate the words of wisdom. You've stewarded this district in a great direction, and you really helped us in more ways than we can say. So I'm sad to see you leave, but I'm really happy to see you go into the next phase of your life. Good luck and best wishes. To the administrative team and everybody that worked on this budget, I think it's something to be very proud of. In these most difficult times, the community came out and supported us. And by the voter turnout, it actually gave people an opportunity to see what we do and the transparency that we've really held our hat on for many years. People have really got to see it firsthand, and they supported us. So let's take this opportunity to continue to serve the people in the manner that we do. To all the people that put together the reports tonight, we understand on the board that this is a very difficult time, and it's very hard to work, and some tough conditions with all the data and so much work. The reports were just so informative tonight. So to everybody that was involved in just doing this great work for our children, I thank you personally. And saving the best for last, Karen, I really appreciate having the opportunity to work with you on this board. I've entered a world that I never thought I would be successful in because of my past employment. And it's been a pleasure to meet you and all the other board members. You've brought a great insight and perspective to the board's service. Your patience and kindness has been very inspiring, and we're going to miss you deeply. The good news is, is that we're all friends, and hopefully, we'll be able to keep in touch. And I will be calling you with the historical perspective on some of these issues. So again, thank you. And this weekend, spend time with your family and thank them for sharing you with us, because we appreciate them too. So thanks, everybody, and on to the next move. Good luck.
Thank you, John.
Anyone else? Final comments?
I will throw out a couple. Sorry, Jen, you want to talk?
No, you go ahead, Karen.
Well, all right. I was just going to say thank you all again. And I forgot to mention earlier, I do want to thank Jeff and thank Mike Harkin again and all the students that provided cards and letters to Latonville Assisted Living. It was so greatly appreciated. They got many, many cards and pictures from the students, and it really brightened their day, so I just wanted to thank them again as well.
Jennifer?
Thanks, Mike. I wanted to first and foremost say hello to Larry, as well as "We'll see you when we see you". I want to recognize the fact that I've had a wonderful opportunity for, I don't even know, it's upwards of 15, maybe close to 20 years of getting a chance to know you. You welcomed me into the district. You welcomed me onto the BRAC Committee. And you also said, you know, "Stay involved". And when I came onto the board, you really helped guide that process and welcomed me with open arms and really allowed me to be on some great committees and do some great work with you. And I'm humbled and honored to have had that experience with you. You have brought a perspective and guidance through the budgetary process and really did some outstanding work here. You're recognized across the state for your contributions, and many times, you are the individual that other districts wish that they had working with them and for them. And also, they use many of your, your work and your output as templates and guidelines for best practices in their districts. And so I just wish you the best, Mr. Edson, in your retirement. And again, see you when we see you. I will miss you. I'll definitely miss you when we go to conferences, but we can have some chats about that at another time. So, but I do wish you a wonderful, wonderful retirement. In reference to Karen, Karen, you welcomed me onto the board during a very difficult and strange time and helped to teach me the ropes. And I will miss you deeply, and I hope we stay connected and at some point are able to have that cup of coffee that we've been talking about having. And now with social distancing, hoping that that will happen sooner rather than later. I will miss your quiet guidance and your input. It's meant the world to me. And again, I'm hoping that we will stay friends and stay connected. So thanks so much, and I hope everybody has a great night.
Thank you, Jen.
Yes. So Karen, you were the last one on the board. When I got here, you were it. Now you're leaving. Some of those really late meetings that, excitable meetings we used to have, but you were always the common voice of those meetings. So I appreciate it. Good luck. I enjoyed serving with you on the board. We're going to miss you. Feel free to, you know, pop into some board meetings when you're bored. And Larry, thank you. Been along, around just as long, and I appreciate all your help during the years, all the committees that you've guided us through. And two people that I'll call friends are now not going to be around, but keep in touch.
Thank you, Mark.
I think that was very well said, Mr. Edson. Thanks for everything. Sure will be in touch and have another event where we can celebrate our friends and colleagues in a closer way, in a more connected way. So again, thanks for everything. As far as business, Mr. Simons, anything else?
I have one more item. I was sworn to confidentiality by the Association of School Business Officials up until Friday afternoon. I want to inform the board that Mr. Edson, for his outstanding service, not only to our district, but for the Association of School Business Officials, which is their statewide organization, the Honored Mr. Edson wins the Philip B. Fredenberg Memorial Award, which is given to a business official and a member of ASBO with distinguished service and a distinguished career, not only in their work with their district as a business official, but also in the number of activities and the leadership that he has shown to ASBO. So I want to congratulate Mr. Edson, not only on his retirement and all the nice things that everybody has credited you for within our district, but his colleagues across the state recognized him with the Distinguished Service Award at a Friday virtual happy hour last Friday. So congratulations to him.
I was actually, this is kind of funny, but I was actually planning to be here next time, but I think maybe we'll let Lynda handle it. The weather has come. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I know that I had the pleasure of being invited to the ASBO ceremony, and I know that that was one of the highest awards and honors that that association can give to a colleague and very well deserved. So very well recognized across the state for your leadership and your professionalism and what you've given back to that group is tremendous. Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
So with that, we do have need for an executive session. Brief one, I believe. Well, it might not, may not be brief. Okay. So I said correctly. But we'll have about a 10-minute break to have Peter email the link, and we'll need all the administrations as well.
Jim, Mr. McKee was not needed at the meeting. I will need Ms. Cannon and Mr. Edson initially, then I'll just need Ms. Cannon.
Very good. All right, everybody, so administration, good night. Thank you for everything. And then board members, look for that other email, and we'll come back in on the executive session.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.